Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to Easton's annual town meeting. As you're seated and waiting for the meeting to begin, which we're going to start momentarily, I thought I'd take this opportunity to thank everybody for coming this evening. As we all know, this has been an extremely difficult year, but hopefully with the governor's announcement today, we see some bright futures ahead. First and foremost, I want to go over some basic guidelines before we begin the meeting. You'll notice that everybody is seated here in groups of either two or one to accommodate for six feet apart, so that everybody has the distance that we're required to have still. If you're not wearing a mask, then there's a section over here to my right, to your left, for you to be able to sit. There's also a section over here for non-voters, so anybody who is a non-voter who would like to sit in that section can. If you have a child with you who just was vaccinated, of course, the child can sit with So as everybody knows, we're required to have a quorum of 100. We've been waiting, now it's 7:18, we've been waiting for this time to get that quorum, and we now have 103. So we now have a quorum. The key is that we have to keep it. So we're going to try to keep this quorum. We have 20 articles tonight on the warrant, and we're going to try to get through, and nobody's allowed to leave until we do. And before we begin, I just want to congratulate everybody who was elected in this recent election here in Easton, in the April election. Congratulations to all the new elected individuals. So as I said tonight, we have 20 articles on the warrant. There are three microphones, you'll see, that are set up throughout the room, but everybody's kind of congregated in the middle, which is great. This is, you know, good, so you can see and hear. There's a microphone right in front of me, there's one over to my right, to your left, and there's one over on the other side, to my left, to your right. So if you have a comment, or a question, or a concern on any one article, you want to come up and stand in front of the microphone. There are tape markings, there's markings on the floor for you to stand six feet apart if you're behind somebody. And make sure that you introduce yourself by telling us your name and your address, because we are being recorded by ECAT, but we're also being recorded by our town clerk. She's taking minutes, so we need to know who has asked a question, or who has a comment, and what your address is, before you actually make the comment. So again, there's no set time limits on speaking once you get to the microphone. However, I'm going to ask that you gather all of your thoughts before you approach the microphone for your comment, your question, your concern, because you're only going to be allowed to come up once during any given article. So one time at the microphone. So make sure, whatever it is that you want to say, that you say it in that one time, okay? All speakers will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and everybody else in the room, okay? No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any one individual, and it's not a cross-examination type of a setting, okay? Just your comment, your question, your concern. If you wish to make an amendment to any motion, you must do so in writing and present it to the moderator, so that we have, again, so that we have it recorded appropriately. We have amendment forms up here if that becomes necessary. Again, the reason we do this is so that the record is clear. Voting, lastly, is done by a show of hands. Everybody should have an orange card. When you came in and you registered, everybody should have an orange card. So if you are for a certain article passing, I'm going to ask that you raise your orange card. If you're against a certain article passing, I'm going to ask you to raise your orange card. I'll tell you what the vote needs to be beforehand, and I'll tell you what the result is afterwards. If you need to use a restroom during the meeting, the restrooms are out to the right-hand side here. On the right, there's the restrooms. Finally, when the meeting is over, these doors, you can exit through these doors, instead of going out that way if you feel like it's getting too jammed that way, okay? So again, our quorum is 100 people. We are over that now. 100 and what? 106. The clerk has confirmed that the return on the warrant is in order, and we have a quorum. So I'm going to ask everybody to stand, so we can do the pledge of allegiance. Flag is behind. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today's May 17th, and it is now 7:23. The annual town meeting for the town of Easton is called to order.
I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the Select Board, Town Administrator, Assessors, Board of Health, Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector of Taxes, School Committee, Town Accountant, Director of Public Works, and other department boards and committees of the town. By way of explanation, this is an annual vote to accept the town report. Selectmen recommend.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article One? Okay, this is a simple majority vote, seeing no questions, comments, or concerns. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, Article One passes by a majority. Article Two.
I move that the town vote to authorize the total expenditures for the revolving funds printed in the warrant under Article Two pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, to be expended in accordance with the bylaws heretofore approved. By way of explanation, this article sets the annual spending limits for all revolving funds established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half. Actual expenditures cannot exceed the balance in the fund, even if the expenditures are less than the established limits. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Two? Okay, this is a simple majority vote as well. All of those in favor of Article Two passing, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed. And Article Two passes by a majority. Article Three.
I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the general laws as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this is an annual article required by statute to set the salary levels for all compensated elected officials. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Three? Seeing none, again, this is a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Three passes by a majority. Article Four.
I move to dismiss Article Four. By way of explanation, there are no prior-year bills to be paid at this time.
Any questions, or comments, or concerns on the motion to dismiss? Okay, seeing none. Again, this is a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed. And Article Four is dismissed.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $44,000 to supplement the fiscal year 2021 sewer enterprise budget, and that to meet this appropriation, $44,000 shall be transferred from sewer surplus. By way of explanation, the Sewer Enterprise Fund will require supplemental funding to replace one of two wastewater treatment plant membranes at the Northeaston Village facility. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Five? Okay, seeing none, this is a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Five passes by a majority. Article Six.
I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 into the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, established in accordance with the Section 20 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 32B, and that to meet this appropriation, $25,000 shall be transferred from the fiscal year 2021 Employee Benefits and Insurance Budget. By way of explanation, this article sets aside additional funds toward retiree health insurance by making a transfer into the town's Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
And again, this is, well, sorry. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Six? Again, this is another simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay. Article Six passes by simple majority. Article Seven.
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $90,679,103, of which $83,61,519 shall be raised from taxation. $813,741 shall be transferred from free cash. $236,843 shall be transferred from the stabilization fund. I'm sorry, I missed, I'll go back. $176,685 shall be transferred from septic betterment receipts received, reserved for appropriation. $236,843 shall be transferred from the stabilization fund. $3,216,956 shall be transferred from water enterprise receipts. $735,359 shall be transferred from sewer enterprise receipts. $150,000 shall be transferred from sewer surplus. $1,588,000 shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling enterprise receipts. And $700,000 shall be transferred from cable franchise and related revenue enterprise receipts, all to meet the town charges, including the salaries of several elected and appointed officers of the town for fiscal year 2022 as printed in the warrant under Article Seven. This is the annual operating budget for the town. The town administrator will make a presentation at town meeting regarding this proposal. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
I think at this time Connor Reed's going to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name's Connor Reed. I'm the town administrator here in Easton, and I'm pleased to present the balanced fiscal 22 budget for everyone tonight. So fiscal 22, thankfully, this budget's quite different than last year when we were all together. It's going to be the first year of recovery for the town, following a very regressive and difficult budget in fiscal 21 due to COVID-19. Difficult decisions made by town and school leaders, as well as this body last year, have the silver lining of putting us in a better position today than we otherwise would have been. Current economic outlooks are significantly improved, basically the complete opposite of what we would have expected last year, following the United States' aggressive vaccination campaign and federal stimulus. The town remains cautious in its revenue forecasts despite that, and despite the year we've been through, the nearly $93 million budget is balanced using the lowest percent of reserves as a revenue since 2008, while making targeted restorations and investments in key service areas. So looking at revenue first, the town collects revenue from a variety of sources, taxation, state aid, local receipts, and reserves. Our revenue next year is projected to increase at about 3.2 million, so about a 3.6% increase over the current year, and nearly that entire increase comes from taxation, while other categories such as state aid stagnate and other sources such as reserves are cut. In fiscal 22, we're projecting an increase of tax revenue of about 5.5%, or 3.3 million, yielding a total tax revenue next year of $64.5 million. Roughly a third of that increase is exempt from the levy in order to meet the borrowing costs associated with the Blanche James Elementary School project approved by voters two years ago. As you can see from the graph on screen, as time passes, our reliance on taxation as a percent of our total revenue increases, which places a premium on our ability to incentivize and drive new growth. So new growth is critical. It's the only way for a town to increase its tax levy more than 2.5% outside of having an operational override. Recognizing the stagnation of non-tax revenues like state aid, the town has spent the previous decade investing in critical infrastructure like sewer, as well as in zoning reform, to make it easier for folks to develop the existing property that they have as a way to incentivize new growth. Prior to COVID, new growth in '18, '19, and '20 was hitting highs that we hadn't seen before the 2008 financial meltdown. In light of COVID, actual growth in '21 and projected growth next year are lower than previous years, and we're staying conservative for now and projecting 650,000 of new growth next year. We're hopeful that this will rebound in the post-pandemic era, and in order for that to happen, outside of macroeconomic forces, outside of the control of many in this room, we need to continue to make the right choices here locally, including zoning reform and infrastructure investment. Later tonight, the planning chair will review an article, I think 17, regarding mixed-use commercial development, and those are critical investments the town needs to make in order to continue to drive growth and sustain services. Outside of taxation, our second-largest revenue source comes from state aid. Next year, we're projecting a modest increase there, below 1.5% for a total of just over 13 million. State aid was cut deeply in the last financial crisis in 2008, and it took eight years until 2016 to recover. That doesn't account for inflation of the cost of goods or services, so we had about eight years of lost time there. This is exacerbated by the reality that Easton is what's called a minimum aid community. Chapter 70 is a state funding formula for education. So your local schools are funded not just by property taxes, but also by state funding. And the formula at the state level effectively looks at a town like Easton and judges that it can afford to pay more for education out of taxes, and that therefore we will receive the minimum increase in state funding every year. And what that minimum is, is $30 per student. So that's roughly $100,000 of new state education revenue for a school system that's $43 million a year to operate. That's clearly not sufficient. So what ends up happening there is what once used to be a quarter of our revenue is now coming in at about 15% of our revenue. So as state aid, as a percent of our income drops, the reliance on taxation just to stay at level services increases. The third area that we draw revenue from is local receipts. That's composed of things like excise tax, building permits, ambulance fees. Local receipts have leveled off in recent years, and we're staying conservative for now because some of these, like meals tax, are highly attached to the economy, so for now, we're looking at only a 1% increase for about 6.7 million. The final category that we pull revenue from is other sources and reserves. In fiscal 22, we will be cutting this revenue source by about a half million, nearly 20% from the previous year, for a total of 2.25 million. The supermajority of that decrease is from a reduced reliance next year on reserves compared to the year we're currently in. In total, this budget taps just over $1 million in reserves. A portion of that, about $236,000, is from our stabilization fund. Stabilization account is basically a rainy day fund for the government. We've worked really, really hard at a policy level and through town meeting budget decisions to build the stabilization fund up aggressively, more than doubling it between 2017 and when COVID hit. So this budget proposal uses only 6% of that fund. In total, again, you're looking at just over a million between stabilization and free cash. That's one of the lowest raw dollar amounts of reserves in a decade, and it's the lowest percent of our spending constituted by reserves since before the last financial crisis. So as a summary of those revenue changes, I won't reread each of them. So getting to the expense side of the ledger, last year was a very difficult year for a host of reasons. It was difficult financially for the community as well. In June of last year, the town and schools put forward draconian budgets facing COVID that cut roughly 26 jobs out of the town and school government. And thankfully, we're not doing that again. And in fiscal 22, we're starting the first steps of building back from that, making some targeted restorations of cuts, as well as some new investments to address critical service needs for the community across town and school departments. So what you end up with for all-town department spending is just shy of 18 million, an increase of about 2%. And for the schools, just shy of 44 million, at just over 3%. So I was struggling to figure out how to present this, because I don't think I've ever been able to present a budget to town meeting that wasn't cutting. So I'm choosing to look at these as investments, and that's what they are. The targeted investments carried in this budget improve our capabilities in a handful of key areas across the town and school government. On the town side, the budget includes support for public health and emergency medicine, capabilities that were on display out in the lobby for our vote-in vax clinic today. The budget includes engineering and operation support for DPW and Water, as their capital project responsibilities will continue to grow with water treatment plants coming online. The budget also has additional staff to support the town clerk's office and expanded voter access in the wake of expanded voter access reform. And there's also a handful of partial restorations to cuts made at the town hall. Easton's school budget includes critical investments for special education and English-language learner supports. It also includes supports for physical, social, and emotional needs, and learning loss interventionists for students who may have struggled or fallen behind during COVID. And the school budget also carries something that's been a priority for the school committee and superintendent for a long time, which is funding to start to reduce kindergarten tuition in Easton starting this fall. Other fiscal improvements in this budget include the debt service funding for the new school that's under construction now, and for the first time ever in the town budget, recurring funding for our other post-employment benefits liabilities. So these investments are made possible for a variety of reasons, one of the most significant of which is that we cut so deeply last year that we're working from a reduced baseline. So it's a little bit easier to build up when you're starting from an artificially low point. Another thing that's been key here is conservative wage agreements with our employees. We have 15 or 16 unions between the town and school government, and all but one of them have signed on to one-year extensions at very affordable cost-of-living adjustments, and that makes budgeting a lot easier, and that makes it more possible for us to make investments like this. So we appreciate the continued partnership of our employees, particularly after such a tough year. Some of these investments are also made possible by SEMREC, which is the regional dispatch center that we worked for years to build, that opened in Foxborough this December. It used to cost the town roughly $750,000 per year to run a local dispatch center. SEMREC this year will cost us $300,000. I can't go without saying that our department heads on the town and school side are shrewd budget managers. They've done a very good job under very difficult circumstances, and that's helped us get to where we are today as well. And finally, because this budget taps a small amount of a stabilization fund, it's important to point out that there's been some tough budgets for many years, frankly, at town meeting, whether it was looking at programs that we know are the right thing, but were not necessarily the right way to fund it by going after reserves at that time. Town meeting has been supportive of relatively conservative budgets that allowed us to significantly build our reserves, and I'm very glad we did, because we wouldn't be having a conversation tonight about starting to rebuild had we not done that. Moving out of operating departments, fixed costs, fixed costs are carried in the budget. Those are things like debt service payments, benefits and insurances, and state assessments for things like charter schools that are outside of our immediate control year-to-year that we nonetheless have to pay for. Fixed costs next year will increase by about 2.25 million to approximately 23 million of our $93 million budget. The majority of that increase is the exempt debt service for the new school, and that's what the levy correspondingly increases to fund. The remainder of that fixed cost growth is attributable to nonexempt debt for previously approved capital items, as well as regional educational assessments and insurance and benefits costs. So this is a summary of those expenditures. Again, one thing that really jumps out is the debt service, a 35% that is driven by the exempted debt for the building that was approved by voters in 2019. And so what you end up with in the net is just shy of $93 million, a 3.59% increase that is balanced. So looking ahead, this budget's a responsible step forward as we work out of a pandemic. In doing so, it taps the lowest percent of reserve spending since the last operational override and before the last financial crisis. It is an improvement, but we have to remain sober about the context in which we're improving. It partially builds back. The jobs and the programs I just touched on are roughly equivalent to five full-time job equivalents. We cut 26 last year. We were before COVID and are still at a meaningfully leaner staff level than at any time in recent years. We were before COVID, and it is doubly true now, at a leaner staff level and per capita spending level than most of our comparable town and school districts. So what this means for the long term is that we need to, as much as this budget is certainly an improvement, remain mindful that the structural revenue deficit that we had before COVID is still with us now. There's some support on the way. The American Rescue Plan includes funding for cities and towns and schools, which is great, that will provide some relief in coming years, but that's not a recurring revenue source, so that can't necessarily fix a structural problem. And so absent an override or some other fundamental change in revenue in the coming years, our ability to sustain and improve services will continue to be very difficult. Despite those longer-term and structural challenges, this budget moves us forward in a fiscally responsible manner. It addresses critical service liability and infrastructure needs across a broad array of critical services, including kindergarten affordability, public health, voter access, and infrastructure. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Okay, so prior to asking any questions or commenting, I'm going to read through all of the budget line items. If anyone has any comments on any of the budget line items, as I read through them, please yell out "hold," okay, for that particular line item. And then we're going to return to those hold line items and go through them one at a time, but those items that are not held will vote on first, just in order to try to expedite it a little and make it not so confusing, okay? So Select Board. Finance Committee. Reserve Fund. Accountant. Town Collector/Treasurer. Town Council. Information Technology. Town Clerk. Planning and Economic Development. Police. Public Safety Dispatch. Fire and Rescue. Inspection Services. Regional and County School Assessments. DPW Administration. Health and Community Services. Library. Maturing Debt and Interest. Employee Benefits and Insurance. Other General Government. School Department. Sewer Department Enterprise. Water Division Enterprise. Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise. PEG Access and Cable-Related Fees Enterprise. Okay. So seeing that there's no holds, I assume that there's no questions, comments, or concerns on any of the items. I see somebody approaching.
I have a question.
Okay. On which line item? Because we just went through all of them.
My question wasn't on the line item. It was about the full-time employees that Connor was talking about in his presentation. My name is Cameron Pressy. I live at 10 Apple Blossom Lane. So Connor said we lost 26 full-time employees in 2020, and five full-time employees would be rehired. I think I kind of missed it on there. I'm wondering which five employees will be rehired. I'm wondering which five employees will be rehired in general. Do you have like a summary of which 19 won't be rehired, and any explanation as to why these five were chosen, rather than trying to rehire more?
Sure. So some positions that are not funded any further are for long-term planning things like when you regionalize the dispatch, we wouldn't be rehiring local dispatchers. So some of those jobs just won't come back. Other jobs, as far as the question, I think, was like, what were the positions being funded? So on the Town side was support for the Clerk's Office, an engineer to support Public Works, a water plant operator, because in a couple of articles, there's a lot of water plants that need to be funded, and restoring some cuts to assessing and collections. As far as why not restoring all of them, it's just a matter of ability to sustain doing so. This is a balance where we think we're restoring what we can and investing in areas we have to, while not building a budget that has a fiscal cliff built into it for next year.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Caleri. I live at 18 Crestwood Lane, and my question is on the overall bottom-line number. As printed in the warrant and as was made in the motion, it was $90,679,103, but in the presentation that the Town Administrator made, it was $92,916,000. Someone's wondering about the discrepancy?
So you get extra credit for catching that. There are certain funds that are called Funds Not Subject to Appropriation. So there's certain bills that cities and towns must pay to the state government, for example, that are such high priority and are ordered to pay that they don't need to go to Town Meeting to be approved. We have to pay them. So we present the total bottom line in my presentation and for the budget book to be transparent about the full books, but Town Meeting only has to appropriate 90.9 of that, so that roughly $2 million is funds that are not subject to appropriation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article VII? Okay, seeing none, this is a two-thirds majority vote. All of those in favor of Article VII, the operating budget, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, okay? And the Article VII passes by two-thirds majority.
I move that $1 million be appropriated for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects, repair, replacement, and/or upgrades of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. And to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $1 million and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Law Chapter 111, Section 127b 1/2, and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligation of the Town. That the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and a security agreement with the Trust and otherwise contract with the Trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loans and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof. And the Select Board or other appropriate local body or official is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expand all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects. By way of explanation, if approved, this will allow the Town to avail itself of funds available through the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust at low interest, which will then be used to provide loans to residents for the express purpose of upgrading failed septic systems, which are no longer protecting the public health. Upgrading includes the replacement of an existing system or the connection to a sewer. The funds will be offered as betterment loans, which will be paid back with interest over a period of time not to exceed 20 years. Betterments appear as additional charges on the real estate tax bill. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? Oh, I see someone coming. Actually, before, I'm sorry, I'm just going to stop you for one second. Before you introduce yourself, Select Board Member Bajjar, there's one more paragraph there under explanation. Could you just read that into the record, beginning with the Board of Health?
Oh, the Board of Health, I apologize. The Board of Health began accepting applications for this program in January of 2012. Through this program, the Town has provided $3.4 million in loans to date. This has resulted in 131 system upgrades, with an additional 11 projects approved and awaiting completion. The approval of these additional funds will allow for the continuation of this program.
Thank you.
Paul Rohr, 11 Lincoln Street. Quick question. It's unclear to me how much of the money is coming from the state fund and how much is coming from us. We put out a million. How much does the state put up?
I couldn't understand what you said. I'm sorry.
My understanding is that we're appropriating a million dollars, or is that a million dollars of our money or the state's money?
We're borrowing that money from the Clean Water Trust Fund.
So we borrow it from the trust fund, and then we're saying, I didn't know how we get a say on that million. We're borrowing a million dollars?
Yes, we are.
Okay. All right. Sometimes when we appropriate, we're appropriating tax dollars, so I wasn't clear. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article VIII? Okay, seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All of those in favor of Article VIII, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed to Article VIII, please raise your orange card. And Article VIII passes by a two-thirds majority.
I move that the Town vote to rescind $130,157 of the borrowing previously authorized as printed in Article IX of the warrant. By way of explanation, the amounts to be rescinded were not borrowed. This is a housekeeping article to remove the unused authorizations, which would otherwise remain on the books indefinitely. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Number Nine? Okay, this requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Nine passes by a majority.
I move that the Town vote to appropriate the sum of $28,268,911 for the purpose of meeting the capital budget needs of the Town for fiscal year 2022, as listed in the warrant under Article Ten. And to meet that, this appropriation, $108,911 shall be transferred from free cash. $345,000 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article IV of the November 13, 2017 Special Town Meeting. $16,425 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article XV of the May 20, 2019 Annual Town Meeting. $108,000 shall be transferred from water surplus. $27,575 shall be transferred from sewer surplus. And that the Treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow $27,663,000 for the replacement of Engine 14, utility vehicle with radios, facility parking lot resurfacing, F-550 hook lift, sidewalk tractor, loader, municipal facilities, capital improvements, water treatment plant, PFAS treatment facilities, and water main replacement under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, provided that in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, the premium received by the Town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and to authorize the Select Board to do or take all actions necessary to carry out these projects on behalf of or in the name of the Town. By way of explanation, this is the annual capital budget for the Town. Funding sources are long-term borrowing and available funds. Two-thirds majority vote is required for borrowing. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Ten?
Paul Rohr, 11 Lincoln Street. Question for the Finance Committee. What's the annual debt service on this going to be over what period of time? What's that going to look like for our operating budget in future years?
I have absolutely no idea. I would default to debt service for this entire capital budget?
Yeah, for 27 million, what does that cost us per year going forward?
I'm going to default back to the Town Administrator on that one.
Ballpark numbers. I'm not looking for down to the penny, obviously.
I'm sorry, what?
What's the debt service going to be for this appropriation going annually, roughly?
The Finance Director can give some of the specifics of debt service, but it's important to note that the supermajority of that, you said 27 million, roughly 26 of that is funded through enterprise-funded debt service for the Water Division, because this is for the iron and manganese and three PFAS plants.
Cool. I just wanted us to get a sense of the numbers. No opposition to it. I just wanted to know what we're looking at.
I don't have the exact dollar amount, because these items are going to be borrowed for different lengths of time. So the long-term debt for the water project would be over a minimum of 20 years.
Do we have a ballpark? Is it a million a year? Is it $50 a year? Like, big, huge, round numbers? Any rough sense of what this looks like? And if we already have it, or if it's already built into a budget, I'm just trying to get
So you're probably looking at about like 1.5, 1.7 million.
And according to Connor, most of that will be coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund. And that doesn't look like a budget buster of any sort?
No.
No, because for the Enterprise Fund, the Select Board is also the Water Commission, and they have already voted multi-gear rate increases based on the borrowing schedule for these four plants, so that the rates cover the cost. With the Enterprise, we have to.
So those are the rate schedule we're already on, or is there an expected raise?
Yes, so there's two. The Board voted a five-year staggered gradual rate increase two years ago in anticipation of the iron and manganese plant. PFAS regulations are very new. Testing requirements for Easton actually went into effect in April. There will need to be subsequent rate increases in order to fund that. In the case of iron and manganese, we're over the DEP level, so we have to do it. In the case of PFAS, the same is true. We have to do it.
No doubt. I'm just wondering where we wind up paying for it. It'll be on the water bills.
Through the water rates, yes.
Okay. And some of that's already priced in with the water we're paying now, but there are planned increases, there are already increases that are already on the books, and there are some more that will be needed. Do we know with a rough fraction of which is already here versus what we need to add?
The water rates for the next five years already contemplate and have funding sufficient to cover the water operations and the roughly $15 million bond you see for iron and manganese. So iron and manganese is 50% greater than the cost of a PFAS, so that's what you're looking at for an order of magnitude.
So in terms of order of magnitude, what we've already swallowed, in terms of rate increases or anticipated rate increases, the upcoming increase would be less than that? So if we're not choking on the water bill now, we're not going to choke on the water bill going forward?
Correct. Easton's water has been extremely cheap, frankly, compared to surrounding communities that have treatment plants for many years. We will now have a more average water rate.
Thanks. I just want to make sure we all understand when we're spending $27 million, we know where we're paying for it and that we can handle it. So thanks. That's great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Ten? Okay, seeing none, Article Ten requires a two-thirds majority in order to pass. All of those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Ten passes by a two-thirds majority. Article Eleven.
I move to amend Chapter 152 of the Code of the Town of Easton as printed in Article 11 of the warrant. By way of explanation, eliminating the newspaper requirement for public hearings better aligns Easton's bylaw with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40(c), enabling legislation, streamlines the application and approval process, and reduces applicants permitting expenses. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Eleven? Okay, seeing none, Article Eleven requires a simple majority to pass. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Eleven passes by a majority. Article Twelve.
I move that the Town vote to approve a 30-year operations and maintenance agreement with Queeset Commons for the treatment of wastewater collected by the Queeset Sewer System in accordance with the Queeset Development Agreement. By way of explanation, in 2008, Town Meeting adopted the Queeset Smart Growth District at which Queeset Commons has been developing for many years. As part of that approval, the Town executed a development agreement which purchased via Town Meeting-approved funds 50,000 gallons of daily treatment capacity from Queeset Commons for the Town of Easton Queeset Sewer District. Construction of the district completed in 2019. And wastewater has been flowing to the Queeset Commons Treatment Plant in accordance with the development agreement and an operations agreement executed by the Select Board/Sewer Commissioner with the developer. Under MGL, Select Board agreements for services of this type cannot exceed a three-year term without a vote of Town Meeting. Given the long-term nature of this service agreement, it is most appropriate for the term to be extended to 30 years by vote of Town Meeting. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Twelve?
Kyla Bennett, 2 Chickadee Lane. I just have a question about the long-term operations and maintenance agreement. Who is going to be coming up with developing that, and will there be public input?
I'm going to defer to Connor for the long-term plan on this.
The operations and maintenance agreement is already an executed agreement on file with the Select Board that was done in a public meeting.
So there's no opportunity to amend it?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Twelve? Okay, seeing none, Article Twelve requires a simple majority vote to pass. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, Article Twelve passes by a majority. Article Thirteen. Article Thirteen.
I move that the town vote to adopt a general stormwater bylaw as required by the Town of Easton, twenty sixteen municipal small separate sewer system permit, Easton MS four permit, issued by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for the town to operate its municipal stormwater system as printed in the warrant article under thirteen, under Article Thirteen, and authorize the town clerk to insert chapter and section numbers as necessary for inclusion in the Easton Code. By way of explanation, this article is required for compliance with the town's MS four stormwater permit. This bylaw addresses two main issues. First, it requires stormwater systems on development and redevelopment sites that do not trigger review by Planning and Zoning Board or Conservation Commission. Second, the Planning and Zoning Board or Conservation Commission both rely on the Mass. Department of Environmental Protection Stormwater Handbook for design and maintenance of stormwater systems. The Mass. DEP is in the process of revising its handbook to be consistent with the MS four standards, but that is not yet expected, is not expected before the MS four deadline of June, twenty twenty-one. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Thirteen? Okay, seeing none. Article Thirteen requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, Article Thirteen passes by a majority. Article Fourteen.
I move that the town vote to authorize the select board, in their obligation as the local licensing authority, to file with the Great and General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a petition to adopt special legislation in a form suitable to achieve the purpose of increasing the number of licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the Town of Easton in a form substantially as printed in the warrant article under Article Fourteen, with the town administrator being authorized to approve any insubstantial changes required by the General Court. By explanation, this article is requesting authorization to allow the select board, in their capacity as Easton's local licensing authority, to grant one additional license above the allowed maximum as stated in Mass. General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section Seventeen, for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section Fifteen, for the purpose of promoting economic development in the Five Corners Development District as described above in the Town of Easton as a whole. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Fourteen? Okay, seeing none. Article Fourteen requires a simple majority. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay, Article Fourteen passes by a majority. Article Fifteen.
I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, the payment of debt service, and other expenses in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation all as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this article proposes the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget for the Community Preservation Committee. Amounts to be funded shall be considered separate appropriations. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Fifteen? Seeing none. Article Fifteen requires a simple majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article Fifteen passes by a majority. Article Sixteen.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from unreserved Community Preservation Fund balance for the purpose of completing construction of the perimeter fencing and walking path around the recently created practice field at Oliver Ames High School located at one hundred Lothrup Street and listed on Assessor's Map twenty-six U as Lot Seven. By explanation, this article would provide thirty-five thousand dollars in funding to cover costs associated with construction of the perimeter fencing and walking path around the recently constructed practice field at the Oliver Ames High School. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Sixteen? Okay, seeing none. Article Sixteen requires a simple majority vote to pass. All of those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Article Sixteen passes by a majority. Article Seventeen.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws pertaining to Queeset Commercial District C as printed in the warrant and as described in the corresponding language contained in the supplement attached thereto. By way of explanation, the proposed amendment modifies the minimum amount of commercial space required as part of mixed-use development in the Queeset Commercial District C in response to evolving trends in the commercial development market, and provides the Planning and Zoning Board the ability to approve additional residential units by special permit, with the intent to attract mixed-use development contributing to a vibrant commercial district comprising residential and commercial uses that increase commercial activity, economic opportunity, and increases the diversity of housing options in Easton, consistent with the goals of the Envision Easton Master Plan and Queeset Commercial District Economic Development Strategic Plan. This printed warrant states a two-thirds majority is necessary for this article, but that is a typo. This vote is a simple majority. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Seventeen?
Kyla Bennett, two Chickadee Lane. Can you explain how this particular zoning change or amendment here will contribute to a vibrant commercial district? It seems like it's only increasing the number of residences.
Hi, I'm Greg Strange, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. So eight years ago, plus or minus, we created the Queeset Commercial Districts with three sub-districts. And the staff and the professional consultants we worked with at the time recommended for mixed use that we would go with a, a ratio of two-thirds residential, one-third commercial. But knowing that we have a small amount of business-zoned land in town, and coming off the heels of the Envision Eastern Master Plan, we felt we'd give it a try and, and kind of flip that and go two-thirds commercial, one-third residential. Eight years later, we have, I think this is our third time here to tweak the zoning, and, you know, with, with the continued changing environment with bricks and mortar, we felt that at this point, for this small district, perhaps it would be worth reducing the amount of commercial to try to spark some growth and investment in, in this corridor. And, you know, so to answer your question, what we've always tried to do, at least for sixteen years I've been on the Planning and Zoning Board, is try to create, try to continue Easton's, Easton special. I think we're different from many of our neighboring towns, frankly, quite a bit because of what was left behind by the Ameses. And instead of one thirty-eight being filled with, I get, we get recommendations all the time, there should be, there should be just a giant warehouse there. We should get, you know, we're not, we're not on a highway, we can only get certain things. So we're looking to come up, take advantage of Stonehill, create diverse housing types and walkable neighborhoods that can help support services, restaurants, you know, and other, whatever creative commercial uses come out of the market economy in the years to come. So, Kyla, to answer your question, we've tried for eight years, as the bylaw is written, with a number of people, a number of, number of developers, if anybody watches Planning Board, I know you all do, you, you know the amount of time we've put in on it. Would have loved to have seen it work with the original ratios, but it didn't. So, you know, we, we really put our nose to the grindstone, worked with a lot of folks, and have revised as, you know, before us. And keep in mind, this is all under special permit. So that's very different. People sometimes are intimidated, for example, by a forty-B, they feel they don't have much of a say. This is special permit. That means any abudders are gonna be notified, that means this is all public. And anybody that watches Planning Board, we're a very inclusive board, we have a lot of public input, and proud of the work we do in the neighborhoods that we work in. And that should continue here. Hopefully, we can come up with a project that will spark investment in, in a, in a part of town that could really use it and, and could benefit the town.
Well, here's my concern, Greg. When, when this was proposed to us nine years ago, I, I fought it because of our water supply, because this development was far too close to our well. And look where we are now, spending an extra ten million dollars for PFAS filtration because we, partially because of that wastewater treatment plant. So, we were promised by Doug King a Trader Joe's or a Whole Foods, which never happened. We were promised a bus, which never happened. We were promised this incredible mixed-use development, which never happened. And my concern is that by adding so many more housing units, our PFAS problem is gonna be exacerbated. So, yes, we're getting a filter, we're getting a filtration system, but we also have to turn off the tap. We can't just rely on filtration, we have to minimize the amount of PFAS going in there. The more residences you have, the more water you're gonna have going in there, waste consumer products that contain PFAS, and I think this is a really bad idea.
Well, just for clarity, this is not part of the Queeset Commercial project behind Stoneforge. This is, this is Queeset Commercial District Sub-District C. This basically runs from the intersection of Depot Street up by, you know, up by Crius Plaza, if you will, down towards El Mariachi. And, you know, PFAS, that's, that's a problem around the country, that's the problem of modernity, it's not going away. I'm glad that we have a responsible leadership and administration that's taking care of it. But adding, you know, first of all, we're not adding any more units. The town, town meeting overwhelmingly, eight, two years ago, approved this project. The, currently, the twenty-nine residences, or thirty, forgive me, I'm getting old, but the thirty-plus or minus residences, those aren't, those aren't increasing, we're just reducing the amount of commercial development required. They can certainly create more if they want, but...
But by reducing the commercial development required, you're increasing the amount of residential development? I, I'll, I'll let you go.
Well, actually, actually, we're not. We are not increasing the amount of residential development. I disagree with that.
Okay, it, it...
If you read the bylaw, you'll understand, we're not increasing the amount of residential development.
You're, you're, you're reducing it from, you're going from two-thirds commercial, one-third residential, and flipping that?
No, so, here's the thing. In the bylaw, okay, by, per acre, you're allowed four residential units. If you go ahead and do the SHI program, if you do basically affordable units, I'll speed this up, I didn't mean to take this much time, you can do up to eight units. It's limited, the bylaw calls out the number of units, the maximum number of bedrooms are sixteen. All we're doing, okay, if you look, there was a project that was approved by our board eighteen months ago. That project had twenty-nine residential units, and then two-thirds the amount, oh, double the amount of square footage for commercial. All we're doing is reducing the amount of commercial, we're not adding residential units. The project's getting smaller, it's just getting a smaller commercial component, it's not getting a larger residential component.
It says the Planning Board may grant a special permit for additional units, those are additional residential units.
Right. Now, that, that's in most of the special permit wording in, in our districts in town, but if you look at the baseline, the, the dimensional and density requirements, they're the same. We're not adding residential units. We're decreasing commercial square footage. Think of it this way, your average apartment in Massachusetts last year was seven hundred and sixty-one square feet. So let's just, because I'm dumb, so let's call it eight hundred square feet. And let's say there's thirty units, so that's twenty-four thousand square feet. Under the original bylaw, he would have had to create, a property owner would have to create, he or she, forty-eight thousand square feet of commercial. Under this new one, he would have to have twelve. So, one, you know, so, it's, it's just less commercial development, it's not more residential development.
You, you're flipping the ratio, but I, I'm not gonna argue with you. You are reducing commercial, but in its place, you're allowing additional residential.
Well, I disagree, but that's, it's, it's the same. The dense, the density and dimensional requirements don't change, so we're not increasing the
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article Seventeen?
Priscilla Almquist Olson, fifty-nine Cedar Street, Northeaston. You know, Greg, I respect your dedication and work on the Planning Board, but I cannot understand this, I don't know, it sounds like the Wizard of Oz. You know, you're creating, when, when Kyla talks about the, uh, increasing the residential because, the commercial because you're, you obviously have to, excuse me, decreasing the commercial, you obviously have to be increasing the residential. And my concern is, you know, our taxes go up and up and up, and most of us are very happy to pay when, when they're justified. But school taxes, forty-three million plus, represent the majority of our budget. And if we increase the residential components, that it seems clear on the face of this resolution, then we're gonna be increasing school taxes because there are children who are gonna be residing in those residences. So my concern is that we reject this amendment, and that we put concerted efforts into attracting commercial development. That's what the people of Easton want. They want commercial development, because currently, the tax rate for residences is the same tax rate for commercial. And in other towns like Mansfield and Foxborough and so forth, they have been very successful in attracting commercial development. So now, the tax rate for commercial is twice, sometimes three times, the tax rate for residences. That's what we want here in Easton. Okay? So I think that the push should be making an extra effort to get commercial development, not increasing residences.
Okay.
I mean, you can talk...
But you're misrepresenting what we're proposing.
I think you're...
Or you may be misunderstanding, I should say.
No, I understand it perfectly. I think you're misrepresenting what this regulation and what this amendment requires.
The, the amount, I just wanna make this clear for everyone, and I agree with you, we constantly try to get resident, uh, commercial property, but, you know, we're, we have very limited business land, and we're not on a highway, and bricks and mortar is changing. But, just, just so everybody's clear, currently, you are allowed, what you are allowed to do, number of residential units is not changing, okay? The only thing that's changing, okay, look, if you, in the original proposal, if you had ten thousand square feet of residential units, you had to have twenty thousand square feet of commercial. It was one-third residential square footage, two-thirds commercial. We're not changing the number of residences. All we're doing is reducing the amount, the minimum amount of commercial square footage that they're required to build. Now, they can build as, as much as they want, that's allowed by the bylaw, but I'm just saying, just so everybody understands, we are not increasing, I can't stress that enough, we are not increasing the density of the residential units.
So you're gonna keep some lots empty? Is that it?
You, you could build less. You're saying, I mean, it's, it's, it's not lot-specific, it's, it's acreage, so, if you're on one lot, it's, you know, but you're, you're building, you're required to build less commercial.
So it leaves open more residential? It doesn't make sense to say that it doesn't.
No, it, it doesn't leave open, it, because, okay, let me, I'll give this to you.
If you have, if you have...
Let me, let me read, let me read this section of the bylaw, maybe this'll help. So, okay. And this, and again, this was approved overwhelmingly at town meeting a few years back. Okay. Multifamily units may be allowed in the Queeset Commercial District under the following conditions. The multifamily units must be part of a mixed-use project. Mixed use is, that's commercial with residential. The maximum number of dwelling units permitted in the district shall be no more than four units per developable acre. The maximum number of bedrooms per unit... The maximum number of bedrooms per unit shall be no more than three. A bonus of up to eight residential units per developable acre is provided where 25% of such units meet the affordable, I'll fast-forward, meet the affordable housing components. The maximum number of bedrooms per developable acre shall not exceed eight, except that the maximum number of bedrooms shall be no more than 16 per developable acre." Should have brought water, I didn't think I'd be up here this long. "Where the affordability density bonus in item D above is met." That is staying the same. That's already been approved. That's not changing. The only thing that's changing is, if you go down to number four, you know, provided that in the Queesit Commercial District, mixed-use development shall be permitted only if, originally it said at least two-thirds of the gross floor area is commercial. We're proposing to change that to one-third. Not increasing the number of units, residential units, just decreasing the minimum amount of commercial development. And the reason we're doing that, we'd all love endless commercial development, but the market is the market. And so we're trying to look at that part of town. It could use some help. We're trying to come up with tools for property owners and developers that can create vibrant commercial and residential properties to help exactly what you talked about, with our tax base, and to continue to help this fantastic town strive.
So you can...
But we're not increasing the amount. Just because there's less commercial doesn't allow them to do more residential. The bylaw does not say that. I can't stress that enough.
So there will be empty lots?
No, there won't be.
Well, I don't, you know, you have 100%, you have a full pie, and you're saying that we're going to reduce part of it.
You'll have more green space. You'll have more green space, is what it means.
Okay. Empty lots, fine, green space. So you can guarantee that that amount of residential property will not increase under this regulation?
It's right in front of you. It hasn't changed.
Okay. We'll see.
Does he want to speak?
I would like to just address one of the pieces there regarding funding for services. While it might seem counterintuitive, adding residential units does not automatically mean more schoolchildren. And not only does it not automatically mean that, it does not. These are measurable facts. The Department of Education keeps track of enrollment. These are public records. We no longer need to rely on consultants to come to Easton and forecast what the future might look like. The town, in the past 10 years, through many town meetings with voters approving it, as well as through 40B, has expanded its housing quite a bit, by 8%. At the same time, enrollment has declined by 8%. That's not because there's something wrong with Easton. Quite the contrary. Most suburban towns have enrollment dropping significantly more than 8% in the past decade. There's a variety of contributors to that. But one of them is that housing in this state is cripplingly unaffordable, particularly for folks under 40. A 20%, what is a 20% down payment on a new single-family home in Easton? It's far outside of the ability for even responsible dual-income-earning families to pay sometimes. Part of why, around the entire Commonwealth, and the governor has identified this as a crisis, part of why housing is so expensive is because Massachusetts has more regulations on building it than in other parts of the country that are more laissez-faire about it. When we have discussions like this, these are important decisions to make, for sure. But to say we should not consider denser housing because it will automatically increase enrollment to some unsustainable level is not borne out by the data that we have. So we've increased housing by 8% and enrollment has dropped by 8%. It seems counterintuitive, but families are smaller now. A lot of housing, particularly rentals, have empty nesters, widows and widowers, divorcees, maybe one child, two. But birth rate in the United States is at the lowest it's been ever. The federal decennial census that just completed said 2010 to 2020 was one of the lowest rates of population growth in this country since 1790. So again, these are important conversations. It is up to town meeting to decide. But it is not true that Easton's endeavors in the past 10 years, based on a master plan not adopted by a bureaucrat like me, but by citizens, to create more options for housing, which is an affordability issue, it's an educational access issue, and it's an economic development issue. If you look at the zoning as it sits today, two-thirds of the square footage of what needs to be spent, tens of millions of dollars, would need to be office space and retail. Who is going to spend tens of millions of dollars on office space and retail post-COVID? If they would, if it were in a developer's financial interest, they would have done so. We agree. It would be great if we were in the situation Mansfield was in, where we had a split tax rate that could offset the burden for taxpayers in Easton. But that's not a result of one zoning article here or there. That's a result of decades of policy decisions, probably most significant of which was half a century ago, Easton saying no to sewer. And Mansfield did not. So Easton actually has a ton of competitive advantages for some businesses. The fact, what is difficult for taxpayers here, we have a single tax rate, is great if you're a business, right? The tax rate is a lot if you're a homeowner, but for a business, it's great, despite that competitive advantage. Our tax rate is maybe 60% of some of our neighbors for a business. We're not perfect. We're not always the easiest to get through permits, but we work quite hard. Greg's Board works hard, the Economic Development Committee works hard, the Select Board works hard. We do try to make the town attractive to business. If it was as simple as us just willing large swaps of commercial in, we would. But developers are in it to make money. And right now, the way this zoning is, it's been there for eight years, it has infrastructure, it's not working. So if that's not a good sell, that's okay. But I just want to be clear for voters in the room, we have expanded housing opportunities, which is a good thing, and it has not increased enrollment to some unaffordable level. And in fact, you look at our largest housing developments, like Avalon, $1 million of new growth is the best this town has ever done, ever, in a year for the entire town. That's what Avalon was. One project was the most new growth ever, more than what we normally do in an entire year, residential, commercial, you name it. These are complex problems and policy challenges, but what the Planning Board's recommending is basically just being responsive to the market, which is something that, in my professional judgment, makes good policy sense. So, thank you.
Paul, Row 11 Lincoln Street. I'm trying to square what Greg's been saying with what people have been worried about. So my understanding is that the goal, however many years ago we first tried to do this, was to get denser residential to a certain level. We're still trying to get denser residential to a certain level for the multi-family units, or whatever, however we're characterizing that. And when we came up with that bargain, however many years ago, we said, and what you as a developer have to do for us is you have to put in twice as much commercial as you put in as this amount of residential we're allowing. What you're proposing is still trying to seek that amount of additional residential for a much lower amount of commercial. I think the example you gave was, just do 10. If you were trying to get 10,000 before, you had to do 20,000 commercial, now you only have to do 5,000 of commercial in order to be allowed to build that many residential units. There's a cap on the amount of residential, but the sweetener of commercial development that we want has gone down by 75%, essentially, if we're flipping those ratios. Did I do my math right? And have I got that going?
Yeah, no, you got it right. And I think what's important to remember, you know, Planning Board, even, you know, the version eight years ago, we're residents just like you all, and we just happen to, I guess, enjoy planning and showing how fat we are in front of the town. But, you know, we, Judy Barrett, one of the leading planners in the state of Massachusetts, who we've worked with a number of times, she told us, she said, "You're crazy, Greg. You'll never get one, you'll never get two-thirds commercial." But I said, "No, we're gonna get, this is Easton, we're gonna get it." And, but you think of 138, that was the old, before 24, that was the highway, you know? That was the way to the Cape, right? And, or to Newport. And now, you know, it's a mixture of residential and some commercial and some abandoned properties. And, you know, the days of the strip malls are gone. And, you know, I refuse to believe that commercials, bricks and mortar's not going to totally die. I think this next generation coming up, represented by many behind us, are gonna, they'll come up with some creative, creative ways. And of course, COVID didn't help, but, you know, we don't have a highway. Can't stress that enough. So why, why does Easton stand out from our neighbors? You know, I don't want to be, the reason I stay involved in this stuff, I want to keep making us special. I think the reason our property values are what they are are all of the fantastic natural attributes, architectural attributes in this town. And what a fantastic town with everything that's done at the schools and everything that's done, you know, at Town Hall and the fields. I mean, I've raised all my kids here. I'll die in this town. I've lived here as long as, as soon as I became an adult, I came to Easton. I love this town. And that may make me sound hokey, but, so a couple of years back, we said, you know what, let's try commercial. I think we can make it work. And we almost pulled it off. We almost pulled it off. But, you know what, the market forces are difficult, and COVID certainly didn't, certainly didn't help. And keep in mind, you know, we have, we have this, twice a year, we have special apartment. You know me, I'm up here all the time changing, trying to change bylaws with, along with my board and these fine folks. So, you know, if we can get one project to go, many years ago, up on Main Street, right across the street from Immaculate Conception Church, someone, I don't know who, painted that house that fantastic yellow. And being a designer, I think, I look at these things. And that whole neighborhood took off, you know? It was like wildfire. Everybody painted and brought out all the fantastic architectural details of those 150-year-old homes. And now look at that. That's, think of what that does for your property value. Well, the same thing can happen on 138. Someone comes in and invests in a project that has, a nice project that has a mixture of residential and commercial, and if anybody's, if you saw the things online, or that was on the Economic Development website, or the sign that was on the Cria's Plaza last year, we worked really hard with Ed Walsh, the developer there, to come up with a really nice project that was unique for Easton. It was like a downtown, a new downtown. And so if we can get back to something, some things, sometimes things just don't work out business-wise. But we need to get back to something like that, because I truly believe that will be the impetus, that will be the motivation, that'll be the spark that starts. And there's many properties that can go right up the street there. And, because, look at, 123 coming out of Brockton, it's tapped out, it's already done. But do you really, I don't want to see 138 be every fast-food chain in the state. Nothing against that. I obviously support fast food, but, you know, I think we can do better than that. And so by creating some, you know, creating a neighborhood there, people, "Oh, but we have a college here, what a great resource that is to take care of." And we do have Doug King's project, you know, which has been going on since 2008. And that will continue. 138, 123, that stretch right there is going to pop. It's the next thing that's going to happen. We're trying to create a palette, a toolbox for property owners and developers to create something spectacular, small-scale, big-scale, to just add to what we've been doing in town. It worked downtown, and now we just, we want it to happen on 138, and we want it to happen on Furnace Village, and it will. But, you know, we have to think five, 10, 15, 20 years out, because that's how planning goes, and it's a cyclical market, and now we have pandemics, so...
So thanks for confirming that I got the math right. So I want to ask the next question.
So did I go wordy?
A little bit. So just ask the next question. So we've, the markets told us over the last eight years that our hope of saying you have to do two times as much commercial, you have to do 20,000 commercial to get 10,000, to be able to do 10,000 residential at the density of residential we want. You're now taking that down to 5,000. That, to me, again, that's a 75% reduction. Is there some market data that's telling us we need to go that far to make this happen? We were that far off, as opposed to a one-for-one kind of thing?
Yeah, most, most planning experts will tell you that we were wrong to do two-thirds. And we knew that. We went against them. I mean, anybody, if you watch, it's all, everything we do is in the public, we're on TV. You know, we said, "Let's give it a try. What's the worst thing we do?" Is we'd have to come back and do what we're doing tonight. And it's been proven. We've worked with a number of property owners, different scenarios. And, you know, and again, you know, the beauty of this, let's say we pass this tonight, and let's say we do a project, and the town says, "You know what? We don't like that. That's, we'd rather see more commercial." Well, whether we agree with that or not, we have this mechanism. We can change it. This isn't in stone forever. You know, zoning is fluid. We're in a very different time. And, you know, 138 and 123 is a very unique stretch, because it's a, it's like New Orleans. It's a checkerboard. It's a mix of commercial and residential, you know?
So again, thanks for the long answer, but my question was, do we have any market data that says we've got to go that far?
What I started with is, all the experts we worked with say it should be one-third. So I'm sorry if you missed that.
So they told us eight years ago it should have been what you're proposing today?
Yeah, and they tell us that now.
And they're telling us that now? So do you have anything that we can kind of envision of what a project that might, like that might look like? Because you've been telling us about how you got really close under the old things, and you kept working and working and getting really close. And this isn't a really close change. It feels like a big change to laypeople.
So think of mixed use. Think of the old, you know, I grew up in Whitman, like a lot of towns around here. It was an old shoe town. And what was, the first floor was stores, hardware store, you know, delicatessen, you know? And then above that were a couple of floors of apartments, you know, or they didn't have condos back then. So that's really what you're looking at, is sort of a new downtown, sort of what we have in the parts of the village, where the ground floor is a commercial or a service, you know, commercial business or a service. And above it is a floor or two of residential units. And that's, that seems to be, that's what we looked at, was, yeah, that's a natural flow, that works, that goes with the walkable neighborhood and the historical look that we're trying to develop.
So underneath each of the, so underneath two floors of apartments, you'd have one floor of things. That would get you these ratios, if you went up.
Yeah, yep.
And we already have dimensional things that will allow them to go that way?
We wrote the zoning specifically for that, yeah, back eight years ago.
How would they have, how would they have met the old things? They would have had to have completely, next to the residential things, they would have had to have tall, only commercial? How would they have met what we were originally trying to do?
That's for the architects to decide.
Okay. I was just wondering what the model was. It seems like we've got a big change in model, and I just wondered if you could tell us anything about...
I don't think of it as that big of a change. You know, we tried. We said, "Look, let's just see if we can do it. Let's see if, and worst case, we'll go back to what's, what everybody said we should do."
I'm just trying to help you out here, because voters are sitting here thinking, "Oh, wow, we're losing all this commercial stuff, and I'm trying to find ways of sweetening the story you're telling." It still seems like, it was a pipe dream, and we've lost it, and we should just give up and just build the apartments and get a little bit, get a little bit of commercial. That, I feel like that's what you're telling us we should do.
Yeah, I don't get it so pessimistically, but, yeah, I mean, you know, we tried it, and we're trying to adjust it so we can, we can spark economic growth.
Okay. I just want to let you know that's how you're sounding from this side of the room. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 17?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you over there.
That's okay. Cameron Presti, Ten Apple Blossom Lane. I rise in support of this Article 17. I empathize with my residents and neighbors who felt like the promises are falling short. However, with that being said, it sounds like the Planning Board has thought long and hard about the economic impacts of this district, as well as what they need in order to incentivize growth. Furthermore, I reject the notion that more people is bad for the town. This commercial district is useless if we don't have workers, if we don't have shoppers, if we don't have people that are living here and using the commercial district. Therefore, I am in support of Article 17. I think this is good for our town. Furthermore, I would like to motion to end debate.
Okay, so you're calling a question, sir?
Yes, could I call the question?
Okay, yeah. Right, right. So the calling of the question has to be separate and apart from the comment. Are you finished with your comment, sir?
My comment is finished.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, now, seeing none, we'll move it to a vote. We have a simple majority that's required here. All those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed to Article 17, please raise your orange card. And Article 17 passes by a majority. Article 18.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws pertaining to Appendix B Dimensional and Density Regulations as printed in the warrant and as described in the corresponding language contained in the supplement attached thereto. This amendment codifies the Dimensional and Density Regulations for the Furnace Village District and Special Uses passed at Special Town Meeting on November 30, 2020. This was the last article on the Special Town Meeting warrant, which, due to loss of form at that point in the meeting, at that point in town meeting, was not taken up for vote. up for vote. This is a housekeeping item. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 18?
Hi, my name's Kathy Walsh, can you hear me? I live at 7 South Street, and a lot of what the Planning and Zoning Board is doing, I'm totally in favor of, I see opportunity here. My concern on this particular item, in terms of the density, is they want to change the density of the residential portion of 106, and from an acre to 15,000 square feet to build a home, and, I mean, one of the things that I think is special about Easton when I bought my house 30 years ago was the realtor said to me, "You have to have an acre to build a house." And I believe towns have to grow, but I think also, Easton is special, and in the last, I don't know how many years, we've had different housing plans that you can build houses for, under an acre, if you do a compact development. For example, at the Old Foundry, under compact, they were able to build about 67 houses on 18 acres, that was actually reduced to 44, only because there was a lot of wetlands there. I live on South Street in the corner, they're proposing to build a flexible development. Now, compact, flexible, I know I had all their, they have good reasons behind them, but in this flexible development on 17 acres, instead of 14 houses under conventional, they're building 20. So once again, the bottom line is, there's plenty of houses being built in Easton on less than an acre, and that concerns me, that the special parts of Easton are, you know, not what we had wanted. This is, for this stretch of 106, it's only supposed to be seven or eight houses that are going to be affected, so my question is, if it's only seven or eight, why step on this slippery slope of allowing homes to be built in Easton in, under an acre, under the 40,000 square feet? They say that they want to do this so people don't put any business on that one stretch of 106. So say we approve this, and then the next town meeting, they want to make the residential mixed use, so then you give business on 106 anyhow. A lot of the things that are also in this involve mixed use for the Avalon Target area and for Shaw's, and I think that would be great, but also, we already have the restaurants having their outdoor seating, Maguires, we have, the mobile station now has its own little courtyard area, so a lot of the things behind this density changing is already happening. I mean, ideally, I wish the 106 residential section was not part of this change, and I had asked, I've been asking for two years to please keep the residential separate from the mixed use for the businesses. I think, I think it makes me very nervous to step on this slippery slope of changing how large a property needs to be to build a house in Easton. The Avalon thing, that's a whole nother thing. I know it made a million dollars, but still, it's different from, you know, what a lot of us were thinking the town of Easton had to attract new people, and that's, this isn't a discussion or a debate, this is just.
Just a comment.
Just my comment, so.
That's fair.
So that was it.
So super quick, I just want to remind everybody that over 1/3 of the lots in town are under an acre, and they're, as I said last year when the two other elements of this passed, this only just passed, we lost the quorum, that's why it didn't pass, or didn't get voted on. The residential district, as the residents required, requested, we kept it residential. We're looking to add fun, add opportunities for these people to help with the diff in the sewer district, to help keep their betterment fees down, and when you look at all the dimensional requirements, we could add somewhere between four and six houses in this district. And it's just, again, offering opportunities to help create a new neighborhood or expand this neighborhood for that neighborhood.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 18? Article 18 needs a 2/3 majority to pass. All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 18 passes by 2/3. Article 19.
Motion. I move that the town amend the zoning map as printed in the warrant and as described in the corresponding language contained in the supplement attached thereto. By way of explanation, this amendment adds two parcels that were intended to be included within the Furnace Village District's depot sub-district. These two parcels were inadvertently omitted in the amendment presented at Special Town Meeting in November 2020. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 19? Okay, seeing none. Article 19 needs a 2/3 majority vote to pass. All those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 19 passes by 2/3 majority. Article 20.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws pertaining to accessory structures as printed in the warrant and as described in the corresponding language contained in the supplement attached thereto. This amendment excludes the use of shipping containers other than on a limited temporary basis in semi-trailer units for storage in the residential district. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and zoning. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 20?
Hi, Rod Sales, 119 Howard Street. Excuse me. I see this, and I understand that it's probably a grab for a little more cash because you're going to have to pull a permit to build whatever you do to replace this, but you're dealing with a town that you have people that have lived in here for, long before it became a residential bedroom, it was a farm town, there was a lot of farming, a lot of that stuff that you're up there now to get rid of, related to the old farmers of the old days. They stored their stuff in there, for their farms, for the animals, for all of that. Now, I'm just curious, when you get about to doing this, and it seems like the power play is going to happen anyways, is anybody going to be grandfathered into any of this? I mean, you've got people that have, that have had storage containers, Mr. Planning Board guy, that have been in this town longer than you. Yeah, you, you're the Planning Board guy, right? What?
I said I've been called worse.
Not by me.
So let me, if I can explain, earlier this winter?
My question, my question was, will there be a grandfather clause to protect some of the original residents of this town? So you're going to put that financial burden upon your residents to replace any of this?
I think, so Jay Tallerman, Town Council, so by law, if you already have a use and the zoning bylaw changes it, you are grandfathered.
I just want to hear those words come from you.
The other thing too is, you had mentioned agricultural storage, agricultural uses.
Not, they're not putting a farm in, you know, they're not putting a cow in there, they're putting hay, they're putting rakes, they're putting their equipment.
If a farm uses a storage facility like this, that would be exempt from zoning.
Okay. And you said grandfathered?
If you currently have one in use that will now be prohibited, then you are grandfathered.
All right, and how are you going to go about that?
You don't have to go about that. Unless you want to change it, then you would need permission or expand it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, that saved you a little bit of time.
I just, I see one more person.
Hi, Cameron Presti, Ten Apple Blossom Lane. I'm just kind of confused about the rationale behind this article, why it's important, why it's necessary. I'm sorry if I missed that, but it was kind of confusing.
So super quick, thank you everybody for your patience. I didn't know zoning would take so long, but at least I get my mask off. So earlier this winter, the building inspector and the planning director contacted me and said that it was in response to, residents in town wanted to use a shipping container for, as a structure, for storage, I guess, and they said they didn't see anything in the bylaw that didn't allow it and they were going to allow it. So that sparked a conversation, they said, hey, maybe, they asked us to take a look at it. We looked at what a lot of similar communities do, and they don't allow it. One of the questions I had when I presented to FinCom, you know, sometimes you see people take these storage containers and they stack them 15 high and paint them colors, and, you know, if you want to create a structure and put it on a foundation and all, I don't think there's anything that would keep you from doing that, but this is, if you're going to, you know, in lieu of a garage, you just take a storage container, plop it in your driveway. Now, we have, in our bylaw, there's already allowances for temporary uses, you know, for construction, you know, of your house, et cetera. So that's how this came about. Our board looked at it, and we said, "Yeah, you know what? That's probably not best for property value." You know, again, in a residential district, and, you know, we hold public hearings, we had some public feedback, everybody seemed to agree, and so that's why it's before town meeting.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. In general, I do think I reject that notion, so I stand in opposition to Article 20. I don't understand why we should prohibit shipping containers and semi-trailers in particular. I'm not sure about the different prices of these things versus constructing your own garage, but in my opinion, it seems like you're focusing more on property value rather than the right of the individual homeowner just to have a shipping container in their yard and could possibly be a classist construct in the sense that the shipping containers might be, you know, cheaper, or semi-trailers are cheaper or whatnot. So I stand in opposition to this, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 20? Okay, Article 20 needs a 2/3 majority vote to pass. All those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 20 passes by a 2/3 majority. Hey, I just need a motion. That's all the articles that we have for the evening. Anybody want to make a motion? I just need, so I believe that was a motion to adjourn, so I need a majority vote, all those in favor. All right, town meeting is adjourned. Thank you.